That's right.
I couldn't get over and say hi to you, but I saw your dad yesterday, I think, at the breakfast.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I couldn't get over, it was, uh...
You said hi to the table as a...
Maybe, yeah.
Briefly, yeah.
Well, your dad was there, though, too, wasn't he? Was he?
Yeah.
Was he there? Missed? Okay, he was there, okay.
He was there.
I saw him standing, okay.
They were at separate tables.
Yeah, yeah.
So, he was across the room.
Oh, okay.
He would have been on the other side of you.
Okay, yeah.
The January sixteenth meeting of the City Council is called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Lesko, will you please call the roll?
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Rockford.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman Notariano.
Here.
Alderman Carlson.
Here.
Alderwoman Connolly.
Present.
Alderman Donilon.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Buscher.
Present.
Mayor Buscher, Aquarum is present.
Thank you, sir. The civility pledge, in the interest of civility, I pledge to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community, and understanding that we each may have different ideas for achieving that objective. The first item on the zoning agenda will be docket number two thousand twenty-three dash zero four eight for the property located at eleven twenty South MacArthur Boulevard. The petitioner is Vegas Property Investments and Renovations LLC. The present zoning classification is R-two, single-family and duplex residence, section one five five point zero one seven. The requested zoning relief is reclassification to R-three B, general residence district, section one five five point zero one eight, and a variance of sections one five five point zero five six. Minimum required lot area per dwelling unit to allow four dwelling units on a lot containing seven thousand two hundred square feet of lot area instead of the ten thousand square feet of lot area required. And one five five point zero nine one B, required accessory off-street parking spaces. Residences to allow four accessory off-street parking spaces instead of the six required. An alternative petitioner requests a use variance to allow the use of a four-unit multifamily residential dwelling unit in an R-two district. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval. Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff and approve as submitted. The Chair will now entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the staff recommendation. It's time for a discussion. Any discussion? We have someone at the podium. Ed Biano. All right. Any discussion on the aldermen or alderwomen's side? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All opposed, please vote no. The voting is now open. And the motion passes with ten voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is docket number two thousand twenty-three dash zero four nine for the property located at twenty-six hundred South Koki Mill Road. Petitioner is Koki Mill Development Property LLC. Present zoning classification is office district, section one five five point zero two zero. Requested zoning relief is reclassification to S-two, community shopping and office district, section one five five point zero three one. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval. Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. The Chair will now entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the request as submitted with the addition of a restriction that no liquor license shall be issued for this property.
Second.
So, I have a motion and a second with approval as submitted with a restriction that there are, is no liquor license allowed at this property. Is that what you said?
That's correct.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Any aldermen or alderwomen have any discussion, or anyone from the... Oh, Alderman Hanauer.
Just briefly, a little background. This was negotiated quite a long time ago when this whole, all these parcels were put in. The neighborhood was told at the time there would be no alcohol. That's why they went to S... That's why they went to business district only. I told them I would support the, the, moving it to S-two, but I would make sure that they would, we'd keep our word on the liquor license portions, so.
Okay. Any other discussion from aldermen or alderwomen, or anyone from the audience, discussion? Okay, seeing none. The voting will now be open. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no.
I hit it. I hit it. I promise you I did, Ralph.
It's not working for... It's cold. Cold outside. Are you a yes, Alderman Gregory?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so the motion passes with ten voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is docket number two thousand twenty-three dash zero five zero for the property located at Bradfordton Road. No address assigned. Penn thirteen dash three five point zero dash two zero zero dash zero four zero and thirteen dash three five point zero dash two zero zero dash zero four two. The property is currently outside of the corporate limits, however, a petition for annexation has been filed. The petitioners are Ryan Meisenbacher and Cassie Meisenbacher. The present zoning classification is Sangamon County A Agricultural District. The requested zoning relief is upon annexation to the city of Springfield, reclassification from R-one, single-family residence district, section one five five point zero one six to office district, section one five five point zero two zero. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval. Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning. The Chair will now entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation. Any discussion? Seeing none, the voting will be open. All those... I'm sorry, we do have discussion. There is someone in the crowd. My apologies. Could you just state your name and address for the record, sir?
Yes, please. I'm Joe Langfelder, two thirty-seven Kilmer Court. I reside in Ward Nine and currently adjacent to the property that's on the, the document to be passed. My concern is the saturation of a two-lane road right there and beginning a month or so ago when it was required that signage was to be posted for a zoning change. Excuse me. Hi, Mayor. This is the first time I've ever stood at this podium.
Well, welcome.
Yeah, thank you. So, but my concern is the saturation of the two-lane road that is currently there and, you know, with school and the process. From the zoning commission recommendation to currently, before you now, again, let me get my breath. It, it's gone to where it's identified that, that a daycare would be put there. Well, with our subdivision across the way, you may be familiar with it. And, uh, former alderman, or the alderman was my former neighbor. But, uh, having a daycare there and with the coexisting neighborhood and that, we upgraded on a, before, on a zoning change for the Ryan properties where, which were adjacent to it on Old Salem Lane and Bradfordton Road. And that was gone to duplex. My concern is the saturation, let alone it identifies a school, a daycare, which would be wonderful, have, have them as neighbors. But the saturation of that drive-through there, and that's all I wanted to indicate before your vote, please.
Okay. It looks like there might be someone else. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Langfelder.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Daniel Hamilton from the Law Firm Brown Hay and Stevens on behalf of the petitioners this evening. The concern that we just heard about the road is, is county, the road is actually a county highway. So, because it's a county highway, there can't be any restrictions tied to zoning. I shouldn't say can't. It wouldn't be appropriate to tie zoning to restrictions on that county highway. The zoning was approved by the staff. The zoning was recommended by the Regional Planning Commission and by the Planning and Zoning Commission. For that reason, we would respectfully request that the zoning petition be adopted pursuant to the alderman's motion.
Thank you. Alderman Gregory.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't have any comments for you. I understand what he's saying and I, I would just ask Alderman Donilon, has, has there been discussion with the county about concerns like this?
The only concern, Alderman, if I can, Mayor, the only concern I've heard is this, this evening.
Thank you.
Did we have any calls from the posting from the Public Works standpoint?
No, we did not.
Okay. Any other discussion on this?
Yes, uh, Mayor, if you would.
Alderman Williams.
Thank you. So, and I ask the alderman, so is it, do we normally, the annexation should come first or not? Or that isn't required?
That's a question of really the zoning staff to, as far as the order of. But I know that when we have properties that are within a certain jurisdiction, a certain mile, like a mile and a half of the existing city, I think we have zoning weight. But I'll let the staff answer it technically, so I don't mess it up.
Zoning can come first, annexation can come first. It doesn't matter. I happen to know that that particular property, I've drafted the annexation agreement. It is out with water and Public Works and electric right now. As soon as I get it back, it will go out for signature, which means you may see it in another month.
Thank you.
In front of this council.
And just for...
Oh, I'm sorry, one more question.
That's okay, go ahead.
So, and they, and the, and the petitioners are wanting to come into the city? Okay, thank you.
You like that, don't you?
I see, you love that.
That's why.
And for the citizen who addressed the council, Mr. Langfelder, there would be a public hearing for the annexation as well that you could come up and speak in case you would be interested in doing that. Any other discussion from the council? Okay. Seeing none, the voting will now be open. All those in favor of the motion to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with ten voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is docket number two thousand twenty-three dash zero five one for the property located at forty West Fairview Lane. The petitioners are Joseph A. Kilpatrick and Megan J. Bricker, Lake Lease holders. Present zoning classification is R-one, single-family residence district, section one five five point zero one six. The requested zoning relief is a variance of section three setbacks to allow a twenty-two by twenty-four enclosed-room addition to be constructed within seventy-five feet of the shoreline of Lake Springfield, which while the majority of the enclosed-room addition will be greater than the seventy-five feet from the shoreline of Lake Springfield, a portion of the enclosed-room addition generally characterized as its southern corner would at its closest point be approximately sixty feet from the shoreline of Lake Springfield. In section three setbacks, subsections A and B of Appendix A of the land use plan for Lake Springfield and its marginal properties, to allow the enclosed-room addition closer to the shoreline than the adjacent leaseholders' buildings or structures. The enclosed-room addition would be further than five feet near the shoreline than the existing structure allowed by code. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval. Planning and zoning recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move that we accept the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation. Time for discussion. Did you have something you would like to say, sir? Okay. Any council members have discussion? Seeing none, voting will now be open. All those in favor, vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with ten voting yes, none voting no. Thank you, sir. The next item on the agenda is docket number two thousand twenty-three dash zero five two for the property located at twenty-sixty West Chester Boulevard and thirty-four fifteen Chatham Road. The petitioner is Springfield Bible Church. Present zoning classification is R-one, single-family residence district, section one five five point zero one six and S-one, neighborhood commercial and office district, section one five five point zero three zero. The requested zoning relief is reclassification to R-two, single-family and duplex residence district, section one five five point zero one seven. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval. Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion. Will you accept the staff recommendation and plan and zoning?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation. Any discussion? Seeing none, voting will now be open. All those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with ten voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is docket number two thousand twenty-three dash zero five three for the property located at one nineteen East Calhoun Avenue. The petitioner is David R. Nica. Present zoning classification is R-two, single-family and duplex residence district, section one five five point zero one seven. Requested zoning relief, reclassification to office district, section one five five point zero two zero and a variance of section one five five point zero nine seven A, required accessory off-street parking spaces, office buildings to allow zero off-street parking spaces instead of the four spaces required. And the alternative, if the reclassification to office is denied, petitioner requests a use variance as a professional office space in conjunction with a property management business and any other relief deemed just or appropriate. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff amended recommendation is denial of the requested office reclassification and approval of the use variance to allow a professional office space in conjunction with a property management business with the following limitations. One, the property management business is limited to the existing building footprint. And two, the dumpster is removed from the property or enclosed by a fence and the variance of section one five five point zero nine seven A, required accessory off-street parking spaces for zero off-street parking spaces, subject to an applicable parking plan submitted and approved by the traffic engineer. Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation is accept the amended recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to accept the Planning and Zoning Recommendation as submitted.
Second.
So, you are making a recommendation to accept the...
The amended.
Application or the amended?
The amended.
Okay, so there is a motion and a second to accept the amended recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. Prior to discussion, I personally want to recuse myself from any potential vote due to a potential appearance of conflict on this issue, so I will not be voting. Any discussion? Any aldermen or alderwomen? Anyone in the crowd? Okay. With that, voting will now be open. All those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with ten voting yes, none voting no. Thank you all for your time on zoning. The Chair will now recognize Treasurer Redpath Fager for presentation of the financial report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Treasurer's report for the Corporate Fund for the month of December, beginning balance, seventy million, one hundred fifty-two thousand, nine hundred sixty-five dollars. We took in total receipts of thirteen million, five hundred forty-nine thousand, four hundred ninety-eight dollars. We had total disbursements in the month of December totaling twenty-two million, one hundred twenty-eight thousand, five hundred sixteen dollars, which left the Corporate Fund ending balance in the month of December at sixty-one million, five hundred seventy-three thousand, nine hundred forty-seven dollars. The ending general fund balance includes fifteen million, two hundred twenty-seven thousand, four hundred seventy-two dollars, which is the December ending balance of our ARPA money. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept the Treasurer's report as submitted.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second to accept the Treasurer's report as submitted. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you, Treasurer. The Chair will now recognize OBM Director Metzger for any questions on the OBM contract report. Any aldermen or alderwomen have questions? Good news. The Chair will now entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the January second, two thousand twenty-four regular City Council meeting and approve the minutes.
So, move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. The motion carries. The Chair will now entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of this council meeting.
So, move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the pre-council reading? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. The motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this council meeting.
So, move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. The motion passes. The Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So, move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the final passage? Seeing none, voting will now be open. All those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. I'm lying to you. It's not open. There we go. Sorry. I'm a little fast. And the motion passes with ten voting yes, none voting no. There are no agenda items that are currently tabled or in committee. The next item on the agenda is item number two thousand twenty-three dash six one zero. In ordinance accepting the lowest bid in authorizing the execution of contract number PW twenty-four dash zero eight dash four nine with Rayhan Brothers Incorporated and Doing Businesses, Sangamo Construction Company for Poplar Place Street Improvements in an amount not to exceed two million, seven hundred ninety-one thousand, two hundred forty-eight dollars and thirteen cents for the Office of Public Works. The Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda item number two thousand twenty-three dash six one zero on final passage.
So, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? Alderman Williams.
Uh, yes, uh, can, can someone come up and explain this ordinance, please? You know, I was out when it was introduced and, but I thought I was listening and I heard one reason why. And my concern is dealing with the funding, I believe, but I may be wrong. So, I want to give you guys a chance to tell me what this ordinance is doing and what it is.
You want to start with that and then I'll hit the funding?
Sure, Alderman. This, this, of course, is a local firm that Public Works has worked with on many occasions. It was the lowest bidder. And we're using one point two million in Far East TIF funds, one point five million in CDBG. Community developments, not, all right?
I'll, I'll do that.
Then I'm going to get out.
The project, are you done with the project?
It's a good project. It's, we're going to rebuild the roads, the curbs, the gutters, and put some new streets in there.
Sidewalks?
Sidewalks, all of them, the whole smear.
Yeah. Okay, so then we'll go into the funding. So, the original ordinance was a TIF agreement and it, it provided for one point two million dollars of TIF funds for demolition and one, one million dollars for the roads. Well, the roads came back, and of course, we know this ordinance was written some time ago. The roads came back at, you see the number that we, the roads came back at. So, last, about a month after I got in, I received notice from HUD on something that they call timeliness. We get reports from HUD telling us we have to spend our funds during, at a certain amount, during a certain amount of time. And over a million dollars was in jeopardy of being lost to the city because it had not, we had not used it for anything for an extended period of time. So, I started thinking about projects around the community. I couldn't think of anything and I, but I remembered being in on a meeting about the roads for Popular Place. And this is a perfect funding source for CDBG funds. So, I conducted, had a, we did a substantial amendment, which we had done in September, that re-appropriated some of these funds that we were in jeopardy of losing, putting them into this project because it, it serves low to moderate income. It benefits the areas that we want to benefit. So, we appropriated the funds. Now, there's still going to be about five hundred thousand short, it looks like, from what we've got. So, right now, the Office of Planning and Economic Development between TIF and CDBG funds will be putting in two point two five million towards the roads, excuse me, at Popular Place.
Thank you, Director. You know, you know, I was involved in many meetings and, um, in putting together the, the agreement, you know, with the unions, with all the different pieces that brought together this project's agreement. I'm satisfied with the project. I think it's moving along. But, um, the, the transition report, did you, did you see the transition report that reported on this particular project where we had the funding for everything already in place?
You mean outside of the agreement that was written? No, I don't think I saw it.
So, so in the transition report, it talks about what we're going to use, and I don't have it in front of me and I don't think you do, Alderman. So, what, what I'll say to that is, my heartburn with this is the CDBG that you're talking about and we may lose and this and that. You know, CDBG for me, as an alderman from the east side, is always better used for housing. That's how desperate we are over there. And to say we're going to use it on roads instead of infrastructure, was there a new cost or did something? Is this a second piece coming in that make it, making you have to find money? Or are we just doing it because we have to find a way to spend the money?
A little of both, I'd say. So, first of all, when this agreement was written, that one million dollars was sent for the, for the roads. And we found out it came at two point, whatever this was.
Higher. It came even higher.
Yeah, much, much, much higher.
Okay.
And then when, again, like I said, when I heard that we were in jeopardy, you know, we've got several developers who could manage a million-dollar project. One of them's Nehemiah. Nehemiah's in the middle of a huge project of their own. Growth International's another one that, what, that we use a lot of our funding for. But they're also in the middle of two projects at the time. And I looked around and I did not see any place else that we could utilize this money. And personally, I did not want to lose the money. So, it, I felt like utilizing it to Popular Place was the best option.
Well, you know, I'll just close by saying, um, I, you know, I appreciate you and the work that you do. But those housing entities are, are doing great jobs as well. But that's just how far behind the east is, these big pockets of vast land of... And then to read that CDBG is to be used or should be better used for the, the, the teardown, the demolition, the rehab, the building up of, of housing, just housing for affordable housing. And then we're spending it on roads. Bothered me, especially when I know I was in meetings where we got that figured out. Uh, I, I realize things come in at a high thing, but that's, this is starting to be a common, uh, thing that goes around. And I, it won't say just your department. The council as a whole hears this often. But you know, the price is going to go up because if we don't make a decision to spend money and, and plan things to use it, of course, we run up on dates where they expire or we run up on a higher cost next year because we didn't do it the year we discussed it. We, you know, prices ain't going to go down. So, I just, you know, don't blame you. I don't blame the mayor. I just think we need to operate better as a city on some of this so we don't run into those situations where federal, you see, is calling us saying, uh, hey, you know, that timeline is coming where we're going to take it back because you didn't use it or it's expiring. So, I appreciate you. Uh, I, I really don't want to do it this way, but I'm just one vote. Thank you.
Alderman Gregory.
Well, I, thank you, um, Madam Mayor. You know, we're days out of Dr. King's Day and, you know, I, I think we all were there. And, you know, I, I will say, Alderman Williams, I think that your opinion should count heavily in a project that's in your ward and what you want to do. I know it does with me. So, so, so let me ask you a few questions, Ms. Vow, because, you know, I've really, really, really got angst about trying to use CBDG funds. I think, I think we have, you know, some, some, some large disparities that we have to attack and, you know, I think we have several projects that we could put one point two million dollars. I could, I could write a, send Murdoch an ordinance right now for cap nineteen oh eight and we could finish that thing going out. You know, I, I, I will say that, you know, I, I was around as well when, when this, you know, thing first came about. You know, the history of Popular Place, of course, those roads was given to Popular Place. Um, and they didn't take care of them for, for many, 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 many years. In fact, when we approached this project, I do know that Corporation Counsel Zirkle was very, very, very against doing anything for them. So, so the city, even, even being in this much is, is, is a good thing and, and us trying to be good stewards to get something done on the east side. You know, and, and it's not, you know, this is a national company. They, they got a related Midwest and a related west and, you know, all types of things. So, they really, 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 you know, should fix their property and do what they need to do. But, but the city's here trying to help them. We found some funds to do that. We took the roads back. So, they're ours now. So, I, I, I really think that, that we should use, um, infrastructure funds more than, more than three hundred
So I, I, I really think that, that we should use, um, infrastructure funds more than, more than three hundred forty-one thousand. I would, I would actually, what, what's, what is the, is CBDG and what's the other fund there?
TIF.
That's TIF, okay. So.
That's how the original agreement was written, um, prior to this administration.
Correct, yeah, correct.
That way with just TIF.
Absolutely, and I understand that. And now they're saying, well, this costs more inflation, blah, blah, blah. You know, it's, it's really not the city's fault that their project, once we approved it, you know, took longer. Um, and, and for us to take, you know, one point two million dollars away from a critical, critical fund for our, for our, um, community, I think is, 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 you know, risky at that. So let me ask you, how, how much, you know, I know we are, um, what, entitlement city from HUD. How much do we get every year, Ms. Vow?
Um, for, for CDBG, we get about one point two million a year. And about maybe six to eight hundred thousand in home funds.
In home funds.
So less than two million.
Okay, and, and, and currently, I know on, on our last budget thing, um, we have close to four billion dollars in CBDG money.
In CDBG, well, once we get through some of this, it'll be a couple of million, yes.
Okay, let me, yeah. And so what's, um, can I ask you, what's the time limit that we would need to use the rest of the CBDG money?
Now, we're fine, we're on timelimits now. Once this, this money is spent and appropriated, which we did for these, this, then we're fine on timelimits. They just catch us every once in a while when, when something has been on the books for too long or we haven't drawn down funds for too long, they ding us on, on, uh, timelimits. And we had been dinged several times in the last couple of years, uh, for not being timely. So this was one of those that I paid attention to right off the bat, soon as I heard about it.
So, so let me ask you this. If we, I mean, Ms., Ms. Ramona, how mu, how much money do we have in our infrastructure fund? Certainly.
You'll have to use your microphone.
Uh, ninety-five, I believe it is.
There's one point seven seven million in the capital infrastructure fund. One point seven.
So everything else is allocated out to the projects that we, we have coming. How much is in the gaming fund that's, that's, um?
There's, uh, almost seventeen point seven million.
So with that said, I think that, that, that it's only appropriate, you know, I would like to offer amendment to you, Alderman Williams, where, where we split it TIF. I think that's already going to take our TIF down significantly. And, and I think that we split it with, um, infrastructure fund. So totally, um, and not use CBDG. And, and if we need to use that, certainly we have many projects in, 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 in the east side.
It has to be spent by March.
Okay. I think we could do that, certainly. I mean, you know, Ms. Vow, I, I, I certainly think that we can, um, expend, appropriate that money by March with, with several, several other projects, including housing. But, I mean, I, I know you, you know, it's a staffing thing as well, but, but as far as, you know, allocating and getting some.
It's just a project, sir. That's where I'm, we're running into it.
Okay, okay.
So you amended it?
So the amendment would be to split, um, this two point, two point, two points, uh, two, two million dollars, seven hundred ninety-one, two forty-eight thirteen, um, between TIF and infrastructure funds. And I pulled up my cal, uh, calculator, so that would be, um, one million, three hundred ninety-five, uh, six twenty-four oh six. So if we split that, am I correct, Corporation Council?
One, three ninety-five, six twenty-four oh six.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I got, too.
Between items zero six two dash one eleven, dash DEVL, FARE, two one one zero, and zero nine five, one zero seven, GENC, INFR, one two zero four.
Correct, infrastructure and, and our.
Do you want it from the gaming money or the infrastructure, which fund?
Whichever one has the most, uh, money in it. Our gaming is the most.
That'd be zero nine five, what is it?
Well, hold on.
Oh, we have a nine five, ninety-nine oh three line, nine nine zero three.
Ninety-nine oh three. I just want to get the right line. Hang on, we got a motion and a second. Wait, we're not on discussion yet. One moment, please.
So I got a question on the, on that gaming money.
Okay, but we're not to discussion yet. So we have a motion to use part of the money from TIF and part from zero nine five, nine nine oh three, which is the gaming money. And then you have a second on that?
Yes.
Okay, so now on that, we have discussion. Alderman Han, Alderwoman Conley was signed, hang on. Alderman Con, Alderwoman Conley was signed up first. Is it on this amendment or do you want to?
I may have the exact same question as Alderman Hanauer, so I'll let him speak to the gaming and then I had a quick question.
You were signed up first, so I just want to go on.
Thank you very much, Mayor, I appreciate that.
And I apologize.
Alderman Hanauer.
Okay, the gaming, though, that's, we split that. That's not all goes into infrastructure. You know, I, I, I mean, so the way that ordinance works is fifty, I thought that with, with gaming, fifty percent goes to infrastructure, fifty percent goes to pensions.
Right.
So we're taking, we, we start taking, you start jumping into that without it in the fund ninety-five, you're, you're.
Can we double check that?
I don't see that.
Can we verify that? I don't believe that.
I pulled up City Code and, uh.
I think, are you confusing that with the marijuana tax?
Well, I know marijuana is, but I thought that the pen, I thought this we had the same thing. We had something else. There's some caveat of some sort.
Section one ten zero seven one, letter K. And it says, um, revenues received by the city in relation to the Video Gaming Act shall be dedicated to road and street infrastructure improvements and deposited into Fund Ninety-Five Video Gaming Sub Account. Video, um, yeah. Okay, video gaming revenue in the amount of three hundred thousand annually shall be transferred for a period of five years, beginning in twenty seventeen, ending in twenty twenty-two to Fund Ninety-Four Capital Equipment Fund.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, I'll, I'll let everybody else go and I'll sign up again.
Okay, Alderwoman Conley.
So this isn't actually to the amendments? Do you want to finish with the amendment questions first?
Yeah, let's finish the amendment. Agreed. Anyone else have discussion on the amendment itself? Alderman Gregory or Alderman Williams?
Actually, I'm sorry, Mayor. This may actually clarify some things with the amendment. Um, I'm just wondering, how, how long have we had this money, the, the CDBG funds?
Hmm, I think twenty-one.
So they've, they've been sitting on our balance for over three years? Okay, thank you. It just seems like there's been opportunities to use this before now.
Alderman Gregory or Alderman Williams, do you have any discussion on, on the amendment?
Yes, my, my only follow-up, um, with, with this particular amendment, I, I just think it's appropriate. Oh, that's you. Is, 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 is really, really to, um, you know, preserve, um, CBDG. I, I share your concerns with how long it's set, but I will say that I, I see, um, on our contract reports, CBDG used frequently, um, as well as our TIF exterior and interior programs. I think a lot of times we run into the workforce part of it with, when, when expensive CBDG, um, unless we're going to, you know, um, you know, I will be prepared to work with you on a project that'll take five hundred thousand dollars from that immediately. Um, I think we have some, 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 um, some other things, you know, and, and that, that will push our community forward significantly. Um, this is not a, a rinky-ding project. It has one point five million dollars committed from, from Congresswoman Nikki Mazinski as well as Senator Turner. Um, you know, and I won't, I won't spoil, spoil any more surprises for this project. But I will say this is a good project. We're invested in it already and, you know, I think we follow up and, and, and we finish that. But, um, as far as this amendment, I just think this is appropriate for, for this project to, to carry out, considering how far we are, we're really going for this company on this project. I'm, you know.
So if I, if I just might clarify for just a moment. This isn't, this isn't like I decide today and this is going to happen. We will now, because this has been approved by HUD, we now have to go through the entire s- substantial amendment agreement again, which I said, you know, that, that we had in September, the hearings and the notices that you all received on the substantial amendment. We sent those out. So now this is another, and again, I'm not saying can't be done. I just want you to understand, this is not Val's deciding today and then Val's going to change it tomorrow. This is a bigger, this has been something that has, it took several months to put together and several months to work through the process. You know, there's a thirty-day comment period, you know, there's all sorts of different things. So this isn't something that can be done quickly.
Right.
Um, and so I'm just, I'm just informing you of, of some of the processes that has to go forward. So this has been approved by HUD. Th, this is a legitimate use of CDBG funds, always has been. And, um, I, so I just want to.
No, I.
Let you know that.
If I, if I may follow up, but first of all, I, I, I thank you for, for one, you know, beyond this. The first time, you have educated me, I've asked questions and I've even asked about that substantial, uh, amendment. For, for me, you know, representing the community that I represent, knowing that CBDG and many of our federal funds, they go to the twelve census tracts. I think I got eight of them right here, you know? And, and, and many of these funds are, are really meant for our community and meant for my community. So I want to work with you on these projects so we don't have these, these type of situations, you know? As well as with Alderman Williams, because his war will come next. And I think, I think the more we work, because I, I, I can tell you, um, me and the mayor share a, a lot of visions about homeownership and, and that's just in casual conversation, you know? And, and, um, you know, I just want us all to succeed and, you know, um, I think this is appropriate and, and, and that we can do some other good things with this CBDG and then, you know, continue to sculpt out with, you know, we're entitlement city, we're going to get this every year. I think we can, you know, get the ball moving on, on, you know, um, similar to the, to the rail project. I heard, you know, Chairman Van Meter, this shovel-ready project, well, I got a shovel-ready project and, you know, that, that can absorb this funding as well. Thank you.
Alderman Williams, discussion on the amendment?
Yeah, um, just that the timeline that got us to this amendment back at the last marijuana meeting is when I first heard of this particular ordinance maybe coming with this funding piece. And, and I, and I barked at you back then, I said, you know, you know, CDBG, I don't want to use that money. You said, well, it, it qualifies and we can't. So I, I don't want to paint this like, uh, they didn't try to, uh, to do things, you know, to start moving projects forward. I can go back with the, all kinds of projects that had come before the city council dealing with housing that we, we just decided for whatever reasons not to do. So we, we were trying to use up and do some of these things. There's plenty of things. He, he doesn't know it yet, but I, I still have Pillsbury. I mean, Pillsbury is going to use some of these. You want to spend that? I can show you how to spend it right there at Pillsbury.
We've got lots of funds for Pillsbury.
Yeah, or right there around that housing division piece of Pillsbury, which is probably the worst. So, so I just wanted to say that there. I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, Alderman Carlson, discussion on the amendment?
Yeah, just a question. Val, I mean, if this amendment would pass, I mean, is the project in jeopardy? Are we in jeopardy of losing any money? That's already, you had said something about March, we need to spend the money by March. Is, is some of that stuff in jeopardy?
Well, I would be concerned because, yes, now I have another million dollar, one point two five million dollars on the books and without knowing what we have to spend it on. And, and the other thing that we have to think about is that, that HUD's going to look at that and go, well, they obviously can't spend their money, so do they need that much money every year? Because they evaluate that all the time. How much money do we get? Quite frankly, through, from the last time I was here to this time, we've lost funds, uh, our home funds because we weren't spending them fast enough. So that, it, it is a concern to me, yes. But as far as anything else being in jeopardy, I mean, I'm con, I'm concerned we could lose this fund or that they could make a, a deci, you know, they could come and ju, just decide that we didn't need as much money each year.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Purchase, discussion on the amendment?
Yes, uh, well, no. I don't know.
We'll go to the ordinance, too, so.
Well, you tell me if this is the right time.
Yes, ma'am.
She just brought up that we lost funds before. I was going to ask her, when did we lose funds and how much was that before? Would that go now?
That's fine.
Yeah, we lo, we used to always get eight hundred to nine hundred thousand in home funds. And, and in the last, like, two to three years, we lost about two hundred thousand in home funds. We don't get as much home funds as we once did.
Okay, thank you.
Alderwoman Conley, discussion on the amendment?
Yeah, thank you. Um, and thank you, Alderman Gregory, you made some really good points. I, I appreciate those. Um, my question for you, Val, is, um, scheduling a hearing, thirty-day comment period, is there time? Um, I mean, it's halfway, well, almost half, I guess we're halfway through January. Is there logistically time to process an amendment to the, the CDBG spending plan before these funds are due?
Well, let's, let's think about that. It's the middle of January.
But I don't know what sort of notice you have to give for.
It's the middle of February, then we have to, then, then we have to find the project, scope the project, run it through city council. We're, we're well into March, April by that time.
Even with, and let's say, I mean, you know, as Alderman Gregory said, here's a project, it's, it's scoped. Does it have to be approved by city council before you do a major amendment or?
No, no, but it has to be approved by HUD and HUD, you know, has already.
And that's, and that's that amendment process?
Yes, that's part of that amendment process.
And I, and I, and again, I apologize. You kind of gave us an, an outline of how that timeline works. How long does it take to get notice to, to HUD? How much time do you need to give notice of a hearing? And then how much time after the hearing is, you said thirty-day comment period. So what exactly are those timeframes?
Okay, so, so if, if, let's just say tomorrow that I could publish this. All right, so publish it.
We, we can't publish tomorrow, right?
Okay, but, you know, just within the next week. And so then we publish within the next week and then, you know, then we have to have a hearing and we have to have thirty days in which to receive comments on the hearing and the changes that we made.
So can I just ask, how much time do you have to give in the publication before the hearing?
It does, no, I could, I could, again, publish tomorrow, have the mayor hearing the next day. As long as it's within that thirty-day period.
And then you have a thirty-day period after the hearing?
Right, and then we have to, you know, and then HUD has to actually, you know, they have to approve this.
Thirty days.
Yes.
So you're asking a federal government to act within a couple, within a couple of weeks? I, I mean, I just, I, literally, I want to be clear because I, I'm, I'm sure that we know their projects. We know that, and I'm not arguing with that at all. My concern is, is that as a city, um, you know, if HUD, if, if HUD dollars can be used for, you know, an area in, in Popular Place, I've heard people complain about the roads in that area to no end. Having good parking, having good sidewalks, having gutters and all that sort of clean, new infrastructure is absolutely a benefit to, to the east side. And, and, and I know no one's arguing that. I'm concerned that we try to go through these hoops and then all of a sudden find ourselves at the end of a short rope and we've possibly lost a million dollars that we clearly have a need for in just this project. And again, I, I understand Alderman Williams' concerns with, with the developer. I mean, we, there are development costs that we expect developers to pick up, but we also, as a community, subsidize those costs when we're talking about looking at low to moderate income housing options that are nice and that are safe and secure. And so, thank you. That helps.
Alderman Redpath, discussion on the amendment?
Alderman Gregory go.
Alderman Gregory, discussion on the amendment?
Gosh dang it.
Alderman Redpath says call the question on the amendment.
I said, I'll let Alderman Gregory go first.
Yes, sir.
I'll let Alderman Gregory go first. I'm going to call the question, ask for a roll call, please.
Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I, I, I'll say that this amendment and what we're doing, it doesn't, it doesn't, um, prevent Popular Place from being completed. It will go on the schedule, we're just using different funds. What we are trying to do is utilize, um, the CBDG portion towards something, um, beneficial as well. The agreement was for one point two million. Now here we are going to, and that was a stretch there, and now we're going above and beyond. So I, so I think if we're going to go above and beyond for this developer, then, then we should take it out of infrastructure and not from, from the citizens who are, who can use these things for their roofs, for their houses, workforce training, um, um, the arts, any national narrative. They have a national narrative for CBDG funds. And while this was approved, because it was submitted as, as, you know, with, with all the, the goodies that are in there, um, um, the, the fact of the matter is, is that we, we already in and, and, and rather than use this important fund that, that can benefit people in so many other ways, yes, it'll be a tight crunch, but I, I, I have faith in, in Director Yezid to get it done as, as she does anything else. I would, I would ask, how mu, how much CBDG money have we used this year? One point two million dollars is a lot of CBDG money to use on just houses. We won't get it done using just houses. We have to use CBDG money on, on some of our, you know, national narrative projects that we have in our community to, to knock those things out. So, you know, and, and, and we have those, we have them ready. Um, it, it's, it's something that Dominic can send you tomorrow, and, and we could write it up, and, 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 you know, I'm not even, after all, the 1.2 in CBDG, but, but I think a portion of that, for that could, could go there, and whoever else has some CBDG-worthy or eligible projects in their ward to, 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 to be executed. I could use it all, 1.2 million, quick like that. But, um, that's what I feel, I think this is the proper fund, this is the proper, if the city, um, you know, the, the, the contract was saying the city would, not the federal government, not CBDG, and not our citizens. It said the city would, to, to do that, and, and that's what our infrastructure fund is for, and that's what we funded for. And I encourage this council to, uh, let us lead our community and, um, you know, um, you know, respect our wishes on this particular vote. Thank you.
Alderman Redpath, you had asked that we do a roll call vote on the question, but Alderwoman Noatriano has signed up to speak. We, okay, thank you. Alderwoman Noatriano.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I just had a question, clarification, based on what Alderwoman Conley had asked. So the funds expiring in March, do we have to?
They don't necessarily expire in March, they're just asking us to make sure that we've appropriated it by March.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask. So does that mean pass an ordinance, or?
Well, with, with this passage, of course, that would take care of it.
Right.
Right, so, yes.
So.
Yes, they want to know a clear plan, which we had submitted this to them and said, this is clear plan, this is how we are, and they're saying, okay, now in March, we expect you to start drawing down those funds.
Okay.
So we have to do, we have to do a huge corrective action plan each time we get ding for things like this. So that we had laid out that corrective action plan in September to them.
Okay, so, so it would be, um, okay, that's it, yep, thank you.
Okay, so the clerk is going to do a roll call vote on the amendment only right now. The ordinance is still something you will vote on later, so this is just on the amendment, to split the funds between TIF and Fund 0959903, which is the VGM Video Gaming Funds. Um, so clerk, let's go, if you'll do a roll call vote, please?
Yep, Alderman Redpath.
No.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderman Williams.
Aye.
Alderman Rockford.
Aye.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Aye.
Alderwoman Noatriano.
Aye.
Alderman Carlson.
No.
Alderwoman Conley.
No.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
No.
Seven ayes, or six ayes and four nays, Mayor.
Okay, so the amendment passes, so the now ordinance, if you want to speak on it, would be to spend 2,791,248.13, but half coming from TIF and half coming from the Video Gaming Fund. Any discussion on that? Alderman Hanauer.
Yes, was, so we're, today, just today, we got a, got information about, uh, setting up meetings for what we, what our projects are going to be for our ward. Did, were, I assume it was to include, and Mr. Fuchs, you might, you, this is more. I assume that that was to cover a lot of this, this portion. And so with this, you, what, what's basically, we've taken 1.2 out, which is about 120,000 dollars per ward.
1.6.
1.6, so it's 160,000 dollars per ward. So is that going to affect a project in every ward? It's what we just done. Because, um, you know, I don't get special funds. There's a lot of us that don't get, don't have any special funds at all. And we depend on the Fund 95, because, believe it or not, we do have bad roads. And that need to be taken care of and need to be treated and, and whatnot. And we depend on it. And, uh, so I guess my question is, is, so are we going to get shorted because we just give money to, to, you know, put, we've given up 1.6 million?
I don't think necessarily, no, sir. Uh, but if you'd like a very specific answer, you need to give me.
Let me talk to the budget director, if you don't mind, Director. Was that VGM money factored into the budget for Public Works for projects?
Not the full amount.
Okay, good, all right.
That might help, David.
Thank you.
The only other thing, the only other thing, and, and I think, you know, with, with the cost of the roads that have gone up, you know, we've, we've put a lot of money into this, and I know this was a, this was a big project for Alderman Williams. I remember him up here, you know, he, he gave us one, one hell of a sermon about it, and I, and I think we all supported it, but at some point in time, if the costs continue to go up, I think that the, the, we got to start, instead of us covering all the costs, I think it's about time that the, the vendor take over some of the cost, or not the vendor, but the, but the owner, and, and take up some of the cost on this. Because it seems like we're giving out an awful lot of money, and these projects should go faster. I don't know what the slowdown is on it, or I don't, I don't know what the deal is. We, we approved these roads to be done long before we approved the, um, the actual project, I thought. Because that was a big deal, we were taking over the roads, we were going to, Alice even got up here and gave us a big speech about how great it's going to be, we're finally going to get rid of all the, the, the potholes and, and all that. So, um, that's my take.
Okay, Alderman Williams.
Yeah, so I, I appreciate that, um, because I'm always saying this, you know, that's my problem with the sportsmen, the, the legacy, the, the developer, you know, infrastructure, they should be in charge and, and be paying for infrastructure. And, and, and we don't get that, a lot of projects are like that. I'm, I'm great, start talking to Donlin, I want to support him on Old Town, because his Old Town is my popular. So I want to help him get them down and get them done. But we got to make sure we make it, developers and people who are going to be utilizing the properties are doing what they supposed to. So I kind of agree with you on that, thank you.
Alderman Redpath.
You know, this project has been moving along pretty swiftly and pretty smoothly. I, I really think that, I don't know if it could have went any faster. The demolition took place, we put the money in for the demolition. The only obligation that we had beyond that was the infrastructure for the sidewalks, the streets, and, uh, what else? That sidewalks and streets. So this project's been moving pretty darn good. I don't think that's the problem that, that Val has. I think she's trying to cover so she don't lose this money, and that's, that's why this came forward. But this project's been going pretty smooth, and it's supposed to be done by May, and I think they're going to hit the target.
Any other discussion?
Ms. Mayor, can I just say?
Alderman Gregory.
I just want to say one thing. I, I, I would never propose anything to hurt anybody else's war, war, and guess what? The reasons that we get these funds and all this stuff, man, we, I, I'd rather not have it. I'd rather live out there in a, you know, two, 300,000 dollar house, be chilling. I'd rather have, see curbs and gutters in my, in my hood. I, I would love for it to look like any one of y'all wards, any day of the week. I'm telling you this. But one thing for sure, Ralph, you would not want to live where I live, bro, you know what I'm saying? So, so these funds that come in, I'm trying to use them to make it better. So, so, so my community can start paying into the taxes and help us get out of many of these problems that we got with pensions and stuff like that. You know, we want to be a contributor too, bro, you know, for real, huh?
Any other discussion on the ordinance? Seeing none, the voting will now be open. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. So the motion passes with nine voting yes, one voting no. The next item on the agenda is item number 2023-613, an ordinance approving an amendment to the rules of procedure for the city council. The chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2023-613 on final passage.
Mayor, I move, we, I want to withdraw this ordinance.
You have a motion to withdraw, can I get a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to withdraw, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Um, I know, Mr. Johnson, you signed up to speak on this, do you need to speak, or are you good?
He pulled it, right?
Yes, sir. I'm just making sure that you're acknowledged.
I'm good.
Okay. Go Patriots.
Thank you, sir. The next item on the agenda is item number 2024-014, an ordinance amending ordinance 553-12-23 to reflect a headcount of 16 and amending the supplemental appropriation to a total amount of 337,505.41 to reflect the salary costs of 16 firefighters for the January 2024 rookie class and fiscal year '24 for the Springfield Fire Department for emergency passage. The chair.
Mayor, I make a motion that we amend, uh, uh, I'm proposing amendment one. Um, it, we've got a few changes.
Okay, so can I get a motion for the item first?
So moved.
And can I get a second?
Second.
Second, now we have a motion for an amendment.
For amendment.
From Alderman Hanauer, and the amendment's in front of you, we have a second on that. So any discussion on the amendment first? Um, I'll read the amendment into the ordinance. The amendment is, an ordinance amending ordinance 553-12-23 to reflect a headcount of 16 and amending the supplemental appropriation to a total amount of 337,505.41 to reflect the costs of equipment for 16 firefighters for the January 2024 rookie class and fiscal year '24 for the Springfield Fire Department for emergency passage, as amended. So any discussion on that amendment from the council? Seeing none, uh, all those in favor of the men- amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. So now we will have voting on the ordinance itself. Um, any discussion on the ordinance itself, as amended? Okay, the motion, or the voting will now be open. All those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with 11 voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is item number 2024-015, an ordinance approving an escrow and dispersing agreement with Legacy Park Sports LLC for reimbursement of project cost advanced by developer for the Office of Corporation Counsel for Emergency Passage. The chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2024-015 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion and a second, any discussion? Alderman Rockford.
Corporation Counsel, can you explain this, please?
Sure, so, um, the city council has previously passed ordinance 569-12-23, which appropriated the approximately 4.6 million dollars that we had accumulated in tax. So under the second amended development agreement, which applies to the sports park, uh, we have that money available to apply reimburse, uh, to, uh, apply to reimbursement, to reimburse costs incurred by the developer already. What this ordinance does is it requires that any reimbursements that we pay out, uh, go through, um, it, it are, are applicable to this escrow agreement and go through an escrow agent, as opposed to it being run strictly through our Oped, uh, department. So this approves the escrow agreements and, uh, what's required of the developer to request a reimbursement, uh, and, um, and what's required of the city to actually go through and pay that reimbursement. But it only applies to the money that's already been appropriated. It does not apply to, uh, future, uh, bond revenue or future tax revenue.
But you, you said for, for the, the, what the developer's already, the money that he's already spent on this?
The, the, that's right, but this requires, uh, th- this will require the developer to give invoices for, for that, um, invoices for the costs incurred. He'll need to give them to the escrow agent, who will then review those, verify them, um, and then the city will, uh, once they've signed off on it, the city will provide the funds to the escrow agent.
Okay, then, then, so we, this all was stip- stipulated on the, on the fact that they got their funding from the, the banking, the banks, right?
So.
Before we, before we start paying, they were supposed to.
Oh, tha- that, that's right, and that's still a part of it, too, is, is this is still subject to the second amended redevelopment agreement, which is contingent upon art satisfaction of their financing.
Okay, thank you.
Alderwoman Noatriano.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I just had the question of, um, I assume we have to pay for this escrow service?
Uh, yes.
And where is that money coming from?
Um, that would probably, um, now, I, I think that that would come from Oped.
Okay.
But I couldn't.
Don't quote you on that, no, got it.
The fund itself, the Fund 23, the tax, the where this money is?
Right, but I don't know where this money's sitting, is that with Oped?
It's sitting in the treasures account right now.
Okay, so it would come from the Central Business District account?
Okay.
There's a, being the previous treasurer, there is this, a special account set up for the South Central Business District, and the taxes go into that automatically, so the funds are there.
And these would be eligible costs under the second.
But like, the, we're, we're getting a third party to like, review their submittals, right?
Right, but.
And that third party does not charge a fee, or?
No, they, they will, but that fee can be paid from the taxes collected.
Oh, I see, I see, thank you.
Uh, Alderman Hanauer.
And, Mayor, I, I just want to say that this is actually a good idea. I, for any of our super-large projects that we have, this is probably a, a good way to get another set of eyes on them, as, as Alderwoman Noatriano just said. Um, I think that, uh, you know, we're, that's going to, it's going to be a lot of moving parts at the same time, and, and, and this is just another way to protect the taxpayers and, and, uh, and our hotel motel tax on this project. So I welcome it.
Any other discussion? Then the voting will now be open. All those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with 11 voting yes, none voting no. Is there any unfinished business to come before the city council at this time? Aldermen or Alderwomen with unfinished business?
Yes.
Alderman Williams.
Director Fuchs, I think this is you, I'm not sure. So we're very have our meetings with you, and it's been set up, um, I'm, I'm trying to find a way where we get a list of what's actually happening with roads, because there's this perception that we are equal. And I would like to see 95, and I guess I'm talking to Ramona, I'm sorry, Director Ramona, because I can't say your last name, but at the same time, um, of, um, the roads, the plans for the roads, because it seems like some of us are always stuck fighting and fighting for a road that's so small, and then a big road gets done. So I'm not understanding, so I would like a list of the, the planned roads. I saw what you submitted with the budget, as well as a breakdown of the money spent per ward in, in each, because I, I just think the perception's wrong on that. If we actually had a list and we saw, and we were following the list, we would see what's actually going on with roads in Springfield, Illinois.
So you mean, uh, not just a list of the proposed roads, uh, and improvements in your ward, but for the entire city?
The entire city, as well as, I'll know my individual, we all individually know what we think we want, because we have these meetings with you. But there's nothing collectively showing all of us what's going on, so we can see if there's fairness, or if there's not fairness. I, I tend to be an alderman that thinks that my side of town doesn't get near as much. But yet, I'm always hip with that, you know, I'm affecting something, or I'm impacting something, and all I want is my fair share. And the way to get the fair share is to show what we're actually doing and how we're actually operating when it comes to roads in Springfield.
We'd be glad to put the entire list.
Please put a list together, thank you.
Any other unfinished business from the Aldermen or Alderwomen? Alderwoman Conley.
I, Alderman Williams, I, I appreciate that, I think that's a reasonable request. If it's possible, um, Director, for us to get maybe a, a, a look back over the last year or two also.
Uh, so you, uh, like a list of, uh, citywide of those projects that have been completed?
Yes.
And the ones that are being proposed for the next year?
Yes, because you, you tried to run away before that, that task got added to, and I appreciate.
Don't leave.
I'm running anywhere.
We have, we have someone else signed up, don't leave, Director, Alderman Rockford.
Yes, Dave, I know that, uh, Director Fuchs, sorry. I know that, uh, I have talked to David Whitworth about getting a list of roads in the future, like I'm going to use Peoria Road. I know it's a state road. Do we meet with the state and the county and, and, uh, get together and decide what is going to be done? Or do we try to, do we push as a city to, to the state and say, you know, we need to get some of these roads done? Because I know, I've heard, in 2026, we got the Route 66 Festival coming in, but for, you know, that's two years down the road, and, and if you drive down Peoria Road, it's, it's not in good shape.
It's potholes.
And I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm curious, do we meet with them, or do we talk to them and say, hey, listen, we got problems?
We, we do meet with them, and, and my observation is that there's more or less a, an ongoing dialogue with IDOT and with the county, uh, about a wide variety of projects, uh, proposed projects, current maintenance. projects, current maintenance, proposed maintenance. So, uh, yes, we do meet with them. I've been to a couple of formal meetings, but it's my experience that there's an ongoing dialogue with them.
Okay, because I, I know that they put sidewalks in from Sangamon Avenue to all the way out to Dirksen Parkway down Peoria Road, and, you know, and I don't know how many millions of dollars they spent on that, and, and, you know, you got a, a patch between Sangamon Avenue and, and Converse Avenue that, that could use, I, I know a million dollars would go a long ways, you know, instead of the five foot, six foot sidewalks that go down Peoria Road. Uh, I don't know how many people walk out there, and I know they, you know, they need them, but, uh, our road needs to be repaired. I don't know who we chase, who we hound, or, or, you know, how we go about it, but we'll find out. I got a meeting with you on Monday, so...
Yes, sir.
We'll talk some more. Thank you very much.
Alderman Redpath.
So while you're in the middle of that dialogue with the state, Stevenson Drive, Stevenson Drive affects four wards, and I can tell you that they haven't done a lot of work on that in a long time, uh, Director, and I, I wish that you would take care of, at least talk to them about the overlay part of it, but there's no sidewalks down there either. So people who want to walk from, uh, the Lake Town area down to Dirksen Parkway or what, there's no sidewalks. And I mean, it's, it's dangerous, people have to walk through the parking lots, and they have to walk in the street, and in addition to the overlay. Stevenson Drive's a mess. And I know it's not your problem, but it's theirs, and I wish they would just help us with it. So, in the middle of that dialogue, Stevenson Drive. Thank you.
I think we successfully moved into new business with all of that. So Alderwoman Purchase, old or new business?
Old. Uh, while Director Fuchs is up here, um, TJ, I had a, a meeting on Saturday, and he had provided me with, um, the traffic flow for our speed monitors, and some of my colleagues asked me about it from our meeting, and could you ask them to just send it out? Because each of us have like two, two sets of the monitors that will be going out at some point, and now it's starting to bring up some more awareness. And I think it would be helpful to my colleagues, it was really helpful to me.
And, and this was a meeting that you had with him on Saturday?
Nope, he sent me the information. I had a coffee and conversation at the African American History Museum, and it was brought up, but some of my colleagues too had asked me after that meeting, how did that go, or how did I get that information? So I think that'd be helpful for everybody.
All right.
Any other new business now? I just want to remind everybody, City Tournament is starting...
Thursday, our budget hearing.
Girls, tomorrow, the girls start playing tomorrow, I think.
Yeah, don't forget about the girls.
Yeah, the girls start tomorrow, but, uh, we do have budget hearings on Thursday, so you'll, you'll miss part of Thursday's games. Um, other than that, any citizens that want to address the council? We had Allison Ramey signed up, but she is not in the room. Anyone else?
Good evening, my name's Lori McKernan, and my address is 1504 South Whittier Avenue. My statement this evening is in advance of next week's CWLP budget hearing. The City of Springfield and CWLP need a comprehensive strategy that includes currently available renewable technologies, as well as those soon becoming available. As we move forward, we need to ask whether our energy investments are bringing us closer to state and federal clean energy regulations for 2045, or just delaying meeting these restrictions. The potential conflict of interest between Springfield's investment in DOMIN4 and becoming carbon free is keeping us from objective analysis. In next week's budget hearing, I would hope City Council members will be asking direct questions about Springfield's strategy for reducing greenhouse gas emissions. So please consider these questions. Does the budget include funding a cost benefit analysis of both current and upcoming energy projects? How will each project that CW, CWLP studies or implements impact our ability to meet upcoming regulations on emissions? Do these cost benefit analyses include financial risks where we're investing in energy sources that might be regulated out of existence in the next two decades? Does the budget include funds for expanding our existing solar array? Is CWLP investing in the front end of new carbon free technology? And is there funding in the budget for staffing and expert in transitioning to renewable energy? So CWLP is working on several projects, um, that they need to share the cost benefit analysis comparisons in terms of readiness for these 2045 regulations with the public. The question needs to be answered whether investing in temporary fossil fuel solutions is the correct thing to do. For example, CWLP is in the midst of a pilot for carbon capture. This process uses, uses a huge amount of water and energy, it's expensive as well as dangerous, and will not meet the 2045 carbon free goals. So we need to know when these dangers, risks will be explained to the public, and what do they plan on doing with this carbon that they're going to capture. Another example is the gas conversion study for DOMIN4. Has it been concluded? And if so, how much will this gas conversion cost us in both our health, safety, and financially, considering that it will not help us meet the 2045 goals? So every energy project that CW, uh, CWLP considers should have this question raised. How does this project help us meet the goal of becoming carbon free? So an example of these front end technologies are with Excel Energy, who has received approval from the state of Minnesota to build a battery storage facility using Form Energy's iron-air battery storage technology. Form Energy claims that these iron-air batteries could discharge electricity for up to 100 hours at a fraction of the cost of current technology, and will improve the resilience of energy network as a whole. So I respectfully ask that the City Council request CW, CWLP to include in their new budget the hiring or contracting of an independent specialist in renewable energy transition to ensure that we have a comprehensive approach for Springfield on preparing for and implementing a shift towards carbon free technologies. So, thank you, I appreciate the time to speak with you.
Thank you, ma'am. Alderman Williams.